Okay, you're ready to start the meeting.
Very good. If everyone would stand next to their computer for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are you ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Jeanine?
Here.
Trustee Lindberg?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
Trustee Bachmann?
Here.
Trustee McManus?
Here.
Village Justice, Jeanine Wade.
Here.
Tonight, we will be having the swearing in of our newly elected Office of Justice, our beloved Honorable Jeanine Garitano-Wadson. And so, Raina, if you would do the honors.
Okay, Judge Wade, if you can please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeanine Garitano-Wadson.
I, Jeanine Garitano-Wadson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, Barry. So I'm not prone to speeches, but I do just want to, again, thank everyone in Village Hall for all of their hard work and dedication during the election. We had an easy election this time, which I think the village was due for over the last several months and years. But, you know, I do appreciate, you know, all the time and energy and effort that everyone put into running a smooth election, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanine. So we will move on to the meeting. And tonight is a reorg meeting. And we have the appointments for the official year 2021-2022. And Raina, you also have the honors of reading the appointments.
Okay. So the appointments for the official year of 2021-2022, the Village of Warwick. The Attorney to the Village Board, Stephen Gabba. Attorney to the Planning Board, Robert Dickover. Attorney to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Robert Singh. Labor Relations, William Kang Keenan Bean. Bond Counsel, Norton Rose Fulbright. Village Engineer, Engineering and Surveying Properties, PC. Water System and Facilities Engineer, Barton Majudis. Engineer Responsible for Reservoir Resources and Dam Safety, Tectonic Engineering. Accountant, Michael Veniri. Grant Writer, Linda Smith. Register of Vital Statistics, Eileen Astorino, term to expire 12/31/2023. Computer Consultant, TCG Solutions, Kevin Brand. Computer Programmer, Admins and Associates, BAS, Municity. Website Maintenance, Mark Demia. Court Prosecutor, Robert Remetta. The Fiscal Year 2021-22 Professional Service Agreements for the Period of June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2022 are on file in the Clerk's Office. Deputy Mayor, Barry Chini. Village Clerk, Raina Abramson. Deputy Village Clerk, Mary Ann Benedict. Village Treasurer, Sadie Becker. Deputy Village Treasurer, Denise Bolnes. Public Works Supervisor, Michael Moser. Working Leader, Jason McCooch. Recreation Director, Ron Intorini. Assessor, Deborah Urick. Shade Tree Commissioner, Robert Sherman. Official Banks, Sterling Bank, Orange Bank and Trust. Associate Village Justice, Peter Barlett. Risk Management, Raina Abramson. Emergency Management, Michael Moser, Michael Newhart. 911 Coordinator, Maureen Evans. Village Newspaper, Warwick Valley Dispatch. Citizens Awareness Panel, Jones Chemical. Michael Newhart, Barry Chini, Michael Moser, Joseph Lawler. Records Management Officer, Raina Abramson. Office Liaison, Raina Abramson. DPW Liaison, Michael Moser. Village Health Official, Dr. Anthony Martini. Safety Officers, Michael Moser, Boris Radzinski, William Lindberg. Summer Concert Coordinator, William Iarato. Village Historian, Ivy Jordan Tulen. Village Poet Laureate and the Village Artist in Residence, to be determined. For the Planning Board, the Chair, Jim Patterson, for an annual chair appointment. Member James Patterson for a five-year appointment expiring April 2026. And an alternate member, Brian S. Farber, for an annual appointment. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Chair for John Greeney, his annual chair appointment, and he's a member through April 2025. The Member Scott Brown for a five-year appointment expiring April 2026. And the alternate member, Dylan Geibler, with an annual appointment. For the Architectural and Historic Review Boards, the Chair, Michael Bertolini, with an annual chair appointment. He's a member through April 2024. A Member Krista Han with a five-year appointment expiring April 2026. An alternate member, Andrew Avila, with an annual appointment. Trustee Chini will be the liaison to the Planning and Zoning, Town of Warwick, Public Works Daily Operations, Engineering and Infrastructure, Water and Wastewater Operations, Green Building Practices, Alternative Energy Options, Citizens Awareness Panel, Jones Chemical, Orange County Planning, Veterans Comprehensive Master Plan. Trustee Lindberg will be a liaison to the Office of the Treasurer, Parks and Recreation, Community Health and Fitness, Government Efficiency, Weekender Bus and Transportation Issues, Traffic and Parking Liaison. Liaison to the Warwick Fire Department, Safety Committee, Crosswalk and Pedestrian Issues, Policy Development, Employee Training, Workplace Violence, Sexual Harassment. Trustee Bachmann will be a liaison to the Merchants, to the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism, Arts and Culture, Historical Society, Public Interface and Outreach, Senior Citizens, Issues of Public Health, St. Anthony's Community Hospital and Bond Support, and the Orange County Department of Health. Trustee McManus will be a liaison to the Albert Wisner Library, Warwick Valley Schools, Town of Warwick Police Department, Ethics, Cablevision, Altiva, WVT, Issues of Emergency and Homeland Security, WIDO and Warwick Valley Community Center, Youth Leadership Academy, and the Warwick Valley Prevention Coalition.
I'll move that motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of February 25th, 2021?
Second.
I guess I'll make the second.
Thank you.
I have a third second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeanine, if you want to jump off, you surely may. We can't hear you. You're...
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I'm starting to fade a little bit, so I apologize.
No, no, not at all.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Feel better.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims, number 21001622 through 21001628 in the amount of $267,385.55.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe we have someone in the waiting room. Is that correct, Mr. Alange?
Yes, absolutely. I'll let him in right now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Charlie. You are on mute right now. If you could unmute yourself.
This is the first time I ever did a Zoom.
Well, welcome to our world.
Bear with me.
Charlie, thank you for coming this evening. Charles is a member of the Rolling Thunder New York Chapter III. And he has a presentation for us this evening. You have some of that information in your packets already. So, Charlie, I'm going to give you the floor.
Okay. I'm Charlie Alangi. I'm a member of Rolling Thunder New York Chapter III. We're a POW and MIA organization. We do many things for veterans, all wars. Whether they need a roof on their house, fuel in the fuel tank, or a ramp made for wheelchair, that's what we do. And 10 years ago, I started a street memorial program for my friend that got killed in Vietnam. And it has taken off pretty good. We have 100 chapters across the country. And all 100 chapters are doing it. So I want to show you. I'll show you a sign. I don't know if you can see that. No? No, I don't think so. All right. I'll show you that.
Right. We have that in our packet. We, all the trustees have a copy of that.
Yeah, they have a copy of that.
Okay. All right, well. Danny Perrell lost his life. He's from your community, your hometown there. And what we would like to do, I talked to the family. Anne and Greg Perrell. And they would like to have Southland Street dedicated to their son. Okay, Rolling Thunder will supply the sign to use at no cost to the town. It doesn't change the 911. It doesn't change anything. You can either put the sign on top of your street sign, or you can put another pole up and put the sign on that. Let's see, what else? It's no cost to the town. And it's up to you guys. If you approve this tonight, I will go ahead and order the sign. And I guess we'll wait till the next meeting. If the sign comes in, if yous all agree on it, we'll dedicate the sign to the town. And we'll have Mrs. Perrell, you know, Anne and her husband there. And she was really excited about it. And it's up to you guys.
Well, we have it as a motion at tonight's meeting. And so I was just curious about the timeframe, you know, how quickly the signs would be made. And...
Well, if I ordered it tomorrow, it'd probably be here by the next meet. When is the next meeting?
In two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. So it should be here by then. The sign is DOT approved, so the town has not, you know, you don't have to worry about that. We have the prison authority makes the signs for us at cost. We had the Department of Transportation help us out with that. So it's, you know, it's a no cost to the town. And, you know, I think it's, like I said, it's up to you guys. I got some more pictures here of, I don't know if you'll be able to see them. I don't know why that's not there. Can you see that?
No, for some reason, your background kind of intercepts whatever you're holding. Now we can, a little bit, but it's hard to see.
There's a street we did up in that court. I guess I could probably shut that stuff off. This is the first street we did for my friend.
Well, Charles, you know, this is a wonderful tribute, I think, to Dan, Danny. And, you know, I'm sure that we won't have any problem. So I thank you for taking the time and reaching out to the family, especially. You know, that's a very important piece of this. So I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's an amazing program. And we're honored that you, you know, you thought of Danny and that we would be the town and also the family would be a recipient of this honor. Thank you.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and order the sign?
Not yet. We have to vote on it. So we'll get, we'll touch base with you right away, probably...
I'll wait to hear from you.
Yeah, first thing tomorrow morning. Okay.
And Andy told me you were a very nice guy. And it seems that way. And you've got a nice town down there.
Thank you.
That's the first time I was out there in a long time. And I hope everything goes well.
Thank you. I think it will. I appreciate it.
Is that it for me now?
That's it for you, I think. Unless, I'm sorry, the board, do you have any questions for Charles?
Does the board have anybody want to answer any question?
No, I'm good.
Just, you know, thank you for taking the initiative to bring this to our attention. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. That's one of America's best. If you click onto my name, if you Google my name, Charlie Alangi, you'll see all the streets that I've done. And it's for the Gold Star Mothers. That's what it's all about. You know, they have something, 10 years from now, if a little kid goes up and say, "Who's Danny Perrell?", you know? That's what it's all about. So he's not forgotten. My friend got forgotten for 50 years. And that's how this all started. And Senator Larkins, he was a big help. He helped me a lot. And I miss him now, but, you know. We've got to try to save this country. I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do. You know?
Well, it's doing actions like yours, I think, that will help save it.
I hope so, sir. I try to teach my grandkids, you know? And every kid, I go to schools and talk, you know? And, you know, instead of playing these games, they got to start playing outside and do stuff. You know? And respect the flags. And that's what it's all about, sir.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I'll wait to hear from you.
Okay, thank you so much, Charles.
All right, Mike. Thank you.
And we also have another presentation from Elizabeth Knight on a do-it-yourself Too Good to Toss. So can we bring Elizabeth on into the room?
Yes. Raina, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Elizabeth.
Okay.
Good evening, Elizabeth.
Good evening.
Are you going to be on video or you're just going to be a voice?
I'm happy to be on video. How's that? Okay. Would you like me to talk about what we have in mind?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, is this my time?
This is your time.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity. As recently as 4:45 today, I got yet another email asking if we're going to be doing Too Good to Toss this year. Someone else had written, "I'd be interested in donating items as we're moving August the 1st. I remember this wonderful event in 2019. People love it so much. Great idea. Thank you sincerely." The fact that we are still talking about it and that people haven't stopped asking about Too Good to Toss, I think is a testament to what they view as a community service. The issue is, how do we do it safely and respectfully, which has always been part of the challenge? But we have an idea about how we might do that safely this year. What we're suggesting is that we have a campaign to encourage Warwickians to host their own Too Good to Toss mini by choosing a day or days in the month of June to put out their items that are too good to toss. And the details will be on the Wickham Works website and also on Sustainable Warwick. And while we hope that the Village of Warwick is still going to organize a bulk trash pickup after this event as part of a collective effort to keep things out of the landfill, we're not going to say that publicly. We, the people who live in the village should look to the village for directions about what to do about bulk trash. What we want to do is make Too Good to Toss yard signs available for pickup at an event ahead of the Too Good to Toss. There's not going to be, the signs are going to have the Too Good to Toss logo. And it will also have a space for the homeowners to write in the day of the week that they plan to participate. Sorry, Jasper, the cat's just shown up. There's not going to be a charge to participants for the sign. We hope to do that with our advertising budget, with some support from the village, because this year, obviously, if we're not doing it on the basketball court in the park, we're not going to ask the village and the town to split the cost of renting tables, tents, chairs, et cetera, because we aren't going to need them. We are not going to be able to enforce rules in person, but we are going to provide guidelines for how to participate. And this will be both in writing and in any other presentations. We're going to suggest that people maintain and adhere to current CDC health guidelines for all participants. They're going to adhere to the tried and true list of acceptable, unacceptable items. It's the same list that we have used in previous years. Mr. Moser again approved it late last week. We're going to make it clear that disposing of the homeowner's items have to be in accordance with the town and the village, the traffic service you use, the homeowners association, any other rules and regulations that they would be subject to from the town, the village, or where they live. We're going to suggest that people set up on Saturdays and Sundays only to be part of an official Too Good to Toss rather than just a garage sale. We're going to suggest that they do not leave items on the side of the road overnight or during the week out of respect for the town, the neighbors, the village, and to avoid repercussions of violating rules and regulations of before-mentioned organizations, municipalities, et cetera. Participants are going to need to agree that the activity in a mini Too Good to Toss held on their own property is their responsibility. And they have to be able to work this out with their own homeowner's insurance. Too Good to Toss, Wickham Works, the Town and Village of Warwick will not be held liable for any activity taking place on private property. We'll have to work to get final language. We don't accept payment for any items advertised as Too Good to Toss. And if somebody wants to have a garage sale, that's an entirely different event. It's got nothing to do with Too Good to Toss. People offering their goods will be encouraged to put up a Too Good to Sign, Toss sign a week in advance and share information about their participation on social media if they're comfortable with that, and in their own circle of contacts to maximize the chances of getting the things taken. Too Good to Toss branded signage is not a requirement, but it's a strong suggestion. Homeowners can make their own if they feel so. That's basically, it's a mini event held on your own property so that we can still avoid having useful goods end up kicked to the curb in the hands of people who need and want them. We don't feel that it's, given the COVID numbers and the fact that it's still with us, we think it would be irresponsible to hold an event at which hundreds of people would gather. The last time we did this in 2019, on the Sunday, which was the Come Take It Away for Free Day, an hour and a half before we opened, we had well over 100 people in line standing shoulder to shoulder. We were counting the number of people who came through the gate. By about 2:00 in the afternoon, we had already had at least 400 people go through when we were open another 2-3 hours. We have over 100 volunteers. We just feel that as much as the community wants us to have a Too Good to Toss, we can't do it safely and responsibly the way we've done it in the past. So this is our suggestion about how we might still accommodate the community, but do it responsibly. So what do you think?
Elizabeth, are you going to have a list of the folks that will participate in this? Or just people who kind of drive around and find?
I mean, the people who have said that they will host a Too Good to Toss?
Yes, yeah. Was there a list that people?
If that's important to you, we can try to do that.
Okay, well, so people don't have to drive all over. They'll know exactly where they want to go.
We can do that. We can make people pre-register.
Okay.
And put it on a website.
Was that going to be your idea anyway? They have to pre-register or?
That was one of the original suggestions. Part of the reason we didn't think we would have to do it with a map for pre-registering is that people do that with garage sales. They don't list it with a map. They just, people do drive around. And by spreading it out over a whole month instead of two days, we feel that we can reduce the traffic jams and too many people in one place at one time. But if it's important, we could probably put it on a Wickham Works website and suggest that people register and put their location.
You're planning to give each person a sign, correct? That will indicate that this is part of the Too Good to Toss activity?
Correct.
So it seems like it would be pretty simple to at least make a list, register, whatever you want. And I think it would help the public for them to figure out, you know, where they're going to go instead of just driving around randomly.
Okay, okay.
For example, if there is, you know, maybe four or five people who are participating in one neighborhood, then that might be an attractive reason to go there, so.
It makes sense. Are there any other concerns or suggestions where, as we said, this is trying to accommodate everyone and do something responsibly? And all the input would be very helpful. We're trying to work with you, not create a problem.
What month were you planning?
We're thinking June, because when you and Mr. Moser and I had talked, we wanted to do it well ahead of the bulk trash pickup. And he had suggested, I believe, July, but we thought sooner rather than later because there's been pent-up demand. People have been emailing me for months that they've been clearing out garages and attics. And now that the weather's beginning to change, they want to do it now. So we're trying to do it as soon as we can, but have enough time to plan it carefully.
Elizabeth, I just want to thank you and your group for, you know, not throwing up your hands and saying, "Oh, COVID's got us and we can't do anything about this", and thinking outside the box and coming up with a workable way that you can effectively, I think, have an event that's, you know, accomplishes the goals that you have for the normal Too Good to Toss. So kudos to you and your support team.
Well, this is kudos to Peyton Swenson, who's the co-chair. She's the one who came up with the pop-up idea. And we had had one conversation with Mr. Newhart and with Mr. Moser. And then Peyton and I talked over the weekend and tried to find a way to make it even more workable. So she's the one who really thought out of the box here. But, yeah, we're just, as I said, we're trying to continue to offer a popular community service, but we don't want to make it dangerous and we don't want to create a problem for the traffic in the village.
I, I don't know whether it'd make it easier on the whole process if maybe it was limited instead of the whole month of June to maybe two separate weekends. Just from the standpoint of the people that want to maybe find some of the things, the gems that are out there to not have to go about that process four times and only maybe have to do it twice.
Barry, that was our original idea. We just thought we would create too much traffic in the village streets if we condensed it, but that was the original idea.
I, no, I actually think it would, I, I agree with Barry. I think a, a shorter window, I don't think it will cause traffic jams.
Okay.
Yeah.
So two separate weekends and just sort of divide it up into like you do for the bulk trash pickup, this area this weekend and then that area the second?
Sure, that would be fine. That's, we do it by north of, north of the tracks or south of, well Barry, what, what directions are?
It's north of the tracks and south of the tracks.
There you go. Okay. I want to make sure I wasn't doing west or?
Now, would this also be available to people who live outside the village in the town?
I certainly hope so. I've had an initial conversation with Mr. Sweeten and he was going to go talk to his board, but if we can finalize the way that we're doing it with the village, then I can go back to him and say, this is, this is how we're planning to do it. As you all know, the other issue is in the town, there is no bulk trash pickup. So then it's going to have to be the responsibility of each and every individual that decides to host this to realize you can't, nobody's going to help you if you leave it out on the, the street. You're going to have to deal with it.
Right. And Mayor, I'm not sure that going north and south of the tracks is necessarily a needed component of this and because it may preclude somebody who wasn't available one weekend to, you know, basically pick their weekend that, that better suits them.
Yeah, I actually, maybe it should be just town, just village wide for two weekends. Because then that would, that would, you know, of course, it, it wouldn't be as intense, you know, in one area.
Right, right, yeah. You, you basically pick your weekend and, and then, you know, hopefully it's able to be published so that people have a map of where they can, where, where the stops would be.
That'll take a little more backend work, but we can try to do that too. I would hope that it would be something that you would post on the village website as well.
Most definitely.
Yes.
Okay. If we're going to do it that, the way that Barry, you've just described with two weekends in the village, maybe we're better off than pushing it closer to the bulk trash pickup date whenever that, that is determined. Do you have a feeling about that one way or the other?
Well, the only thing I offer is that if bulk trash pickup is going to occur in probably September would be my guess that you've got basically July and August, which there's a lot of vacations. And I think people are pent up for vacations as well as they are for Too Good to Toss. So it seems to me that maybe early June would be the, the, the best situation.
Okay.
Because later in June, you've got graduation and all the things around that, so.
Okay. All right. So early in June, two weekends in a row and we're not divvying it up by what part of town?
Right.
What part of the village you live in? Okay, any other considerations? Or concerns?
Well, what we have to do is stay in communication, Elizabeth, and with Mike Moser and really just kind of get that, get those dates kind of orchestrated or worked out. And, you know, it's going to work for everyone, so. And we're available.
Okay, great. And I would like to formally request that since I would have asked for both the village and the town to split the cost of, as I said, renting the tents, the tables, the chairs, if you could pay for a banner and yard sale signs and I will get an estimate for all of that and come back to you.
Okay.
It's going to be a lot less than what you've put in, in previous years because we don't need the setup and all the rest of it. I mean, we don't have a budget. Nobody, everybody volunteers. There's, we don't get paid. So we could use some help.
Sure. We will.
Great. Okay. Well, then let me, is there anything else you'd like to ask me or tell me?
Trustees?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Well, let me get back to you then and I'll write it up again. And shall I send it to you, Mr. Mayor and, and copy everybody on the village board?
Uh, yes, and to, and to the village clerk, definitely.
Of, of course, always. Okay. Thank you very much for the time. Thank you very much for
Thank you.
your support. And I don't mean just writing a check. I mean literally for supporting this, our ability to continue a community service. I really appreciate it.
It's been a, a great activity and as you know, as you have said, so many people have looked forward to it. It, it does a lot of things on a lot of different levels. It's not just about sustainability. It's also about community. So, and you know that.
It's, yeah, it's like when I started the Repair Cafe and John Whackman said to me, you think you're keeping things out of the landfill and you are. He said, but the part you just don't know yet is you're really weaving threads of community. And I thought, what is he talking about? And the first time we opened the door, I saw it right in front of your face. So this is part of that whole effort. Okay. Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you.
All right. Good night.
Good night. We'll move on to correspondence. We have a letter from Leyland Alliance Communities LLC requesting a change to village zoning for senior housing development. That was a letter that actually came to us a couple of years ago, I believe, at this point. But he, Mr. Marquette is requesting to talk to our board again. And so we will put him as for a presentation for next meeting. And then we have a letter from the Orange County Department of Planning replying to local law to amend the zoning map to change the designation of 15 Elm Street from light industrial to central business and they feel that there will be no, no effect on, on properties or, or the zoning. And then also a letter from attorney Jay Myrow dated March 22nd, 2021 regarding the Village View Estates LLC subdivision petition for annexation and application for a special use permit. And in that letter, Mr. Myrow describes that the developer will be willing to put a easement on properties in the town. So that is our correspondence for this evening. Under discussions tonight, we have two, two things. One is about conflicting events. As you know, we're receiving a lot of requests to use our parks. We have motion 10 and 11 for Juneteenth, which is poetry reading and in, and it's a wonderfully organized event. So I think it's going to be great. But one of the issues that we will be having is if we move forward without outdoor dining, then Railroad Avenue and Railroad Green becomes pretty close quarters if you're going to have bands and/or music of some sort. So I think we, I just want to say that we have to just look at each, each application as it comes before us. Because again, we do have other venues. We have Stanley Demming Park, it has electricity, it has a gazebo, has room, has bathrooms. And so that's a wonderful facility that some people don't think about using. And so in, in, in some cases, we hope to direct them over there, you know, if it makes more sense for them. So just for, for you to know that and as far as the Juneteenth event, I don't think it will conflict because it's early in the day and our, the outdoor dining would begin afterwards. So it really is fine. So that's, that's good. And then are there any other concerns or thoughts about that?
Yeah, Mayor, you're correct. I mean, I know his use is from like nine to five, although the event starts at about 11 o'clock. So if, if we head to in this situation or other situations, we can modify the time somewhat, you know, so it doesn't conflict with, you know, particularly the dinner hour on Railroad Avenue. So but, you know, I think we're going to have to be more sensitive to the, you know, the, the event hours as it conflicts.
Right. And then the other thing under discussion is a peddler's permit for Astral Power. Astral Power is a solar company. And we are actually, you know, part of their campaign, the Village of Warwick and one of the things that had happened early on in COVID is that we discouraged or did not really allow door-to-door solicitation. We just felt it was absolutely the wrong message and the wrong thing. As things are changing, they're changing rather quickly and dramatically. I think it's worth relooking at that and the Astral Power, if you, in your packet, there is a description of the protocols that they use, which is pretty strident. I mean, it's pretty stringent, I think. And I, I feel that, you know, if, if somebody's going to be careful as careful as this, then, then it sure makes sense. But I believe that we should probably review these again as a board on, you know, case by case basis.
Have, have we gotten any interpretation from the village attorney relative to what constitutes the requirement for peddling and soliciting licenses? Because it, it seems to me that this doesn't fall under the peddler definition that's in our village code. Now, maybe we need to look at it and think about updating it, but you know, it, it looks like it's, to me, it looks like it's pretty specific where it talks about where's merchandise, meats, fish, vegetables, fruits, garden truck farm products or provisions, offering and exposing the same for sale or making sales and delivering articles to purchasers. So it doesn't seem to, you know, say if you're going around and you're talking to a homeowner about another service that it doesn't really necessarily fit into the strict definition that we have in the code.
Raina, you are the person that sits at the desk that gets these requests and is it, do we get many requests that fit into what Barry just described?
Well, we used to have a food delivery service. We don't have them, you know, at this time, but I always felt that it fell under, because, because we do at least once a year have one to two solar companies want to go door-to-door to sell their services, to sell their products. And I always felt that it fell under merchandise. That's what our code says. So in this case?
I, I don't have a problem with your interpretation and, and the way you've, you've used it. I, I just think if, if that's going to be the case, then we should maybe strengthen our code so that it supports the good practices that you're using.
I, I agree, Barry. I think it really needs a, a look at and updating, definitely.
Because this seems to hearken back to the 50s when, you know, the vegetable guy came around, the tin man came around and with the wagon and sold, sold provisions and goods from that, from that vehicle.
Right.
I know in the past, you know, that it seems that, you know, the hot dog carts, the ice cream guy that were providing those, you know, drive around the village services were the ones that were, were getting the, the licenses.
Yeah, we've had routinely, like I said, once or twice a year, we have, we have sold our companies. That's actually the most popular.
Well, certainly if they come to us and say, you know, we'd like to, to get, we'd like to do this, the obvious response should be, okay, yeah, give us the information and fill out the application and we'll give you the license.
Because then, then they're, they're background checked with the police department. They send over their information.
Yeah. I just, I, I, you know, I don't know that there's anything we, we could do if someone went door-to-door soliciting without the license that would fit, i- i- if it didn't fit specifically into the definition, that we would necessarily be able to do anything about that.
Though I must say, Barry, we, when a company comes into town and starts soliciting without a license, we get the phone calls at Village Hall immediately.
Agreed. And I'm not sure that we have the teeth in our law to, to do that if they fall outside the definition. And we should correct that.
Yeah. But back to Astral Power, does the board feel comfortable with moving forward with their peddler's permit?
Do they? They just do rooftop solar or are they solar farms or both?
I believe both.
I don't think it's rooftop.
Yeah, I think it's more like community solar.
It is.
So it's more solar farm than rooftop. Okay, that's just a question. Thank you.
I, I, I don't have any problem with it. I, I think it would be helpful if we were able to advertise it, you know, on our website or paper that, you know, you might be getting somebody ringing your doorbell.
Right.
You know? Just they're not completely surprised.
Especially if it's something that, you know, we've endorsed and are supporting for the benefit of the community as a whole.
That's right. And they, they are allowed in the town, so it does make sense. Okay. Well, I, I just wanted your input and I appreciate that. Do we have anybody for privilege of the floor, Raina?
I did not receive any emails and there are no comments to be assumed, so.
So then we'll move forward with motions and trustee Cheney?
Okay. And this is a modification to the motion that's printed on the agenda. It's on the, there's an addendum document that we received. It's a resolution approving performance security for DOT maintenance permit, whereas roadways owned by New York State run through the Village of Warwick and whereas annually and from time to time, the village performs work slash operations on the said state roadways, which involves construction, maintenance or alteration of some kind. And whereas pursuant to 17 NYCRR 127.6, such annual and or periodic work on state roadways by the village requires a maintenance permit from the New York Department of Transportation and the posting of either a performance or payment bond in the amount of $100,000 or the posting of an undertaking by the village. And whereas the village has before it the form for the said undertaking to be posted with the state, a copy of which is attached here too. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, that the village board does hereby elect to post an undertaking upon its DOT road maintenance permit in the form attached here too. And two, that the mayor is authorized to execute and post the said undertaking and to execute any further documents necessary to carry out the terms thereof.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote?
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Lindberg?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
Yeah.
Trustee McManus?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the payment in the amount of $31,895 to Power Generator Service LLC for the purchase of an emergency generator for the Ridgefield Water Pump Station as per the recommendation of the DPW supervisor, Mike Moser. Funds are appropriated in budget code F.8320.2000 in the 2020-21 budget.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion to accept the proposal from Tam Enterprises dated March 3rd, 2021 for repairs to wastewater treatment plant RBC unit number three for shaft repair and idler bearing replacement at a cost of $8,740. Based on the recommendation of JCO Contract Operator Keith Herbert and DPW Supervisor Mike Moser, funds are appropriated in budget code G dot eight one two zero slash four four zero zero in the 2020 2021 budget.
Second.
Question, please. What kind of accident caused the damage?
It wasn't an accident. They get out a line and then the shaft ends up with a groove in it. And the groove has to be either, well, filled either with a, with some sort of a material and then the bearing has to be replaced. So the bearing basically failed and created the, the problem with the shaft. And so this is replacing that bearing. It's, they, they just wear out over time.
Keith Herbert's saying marks it as an accident.
That's not how it was presented.
Why I'm asking as well.
I, I, I understand that.
I'm trying to get there.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm looking for where it said that it was an accident.
Procurement policy exhibit A, repairs to RBC number three idler bearing. He has emergency purchase circled as result from accident or unanticipated incident. So just a failure of the unanticipated?
Yeah, it's unanticipated, yes. And it ended up, we, we ended up not, I mean, this isn't an emergency. It, it is, but we didn't use this process to avoid getting the three quotes. So we went through, really went through the, the, the process of receiving the quotations that we needed to. You know, it took a couple of extra weeks, but we felt that, you know, while it was an emergency, we wanted to get a, get to it as quickly as possible. We didn't preclude ourselves from going through the, the, the proper procedures.
The judge didn't mark number, he shouldn't have marked number three on the sheet, though.
Right.
Immediate action.
Well, he, he originally did it and we kind of put the brakes on it. So he probably should have updated that.
It's a new form.
He's not a new person.
A new form, though. Barry, is it a very specialized project where the quotes are not so close?
Yeah, um, there, there's a, there are two ways to repair the shaft. One is to repair it with a material called Belzona, which is, uh, kind of, I guess it's kind of a plastic metal type mixture. And they fill the grooves with that and then they reshape the, the shaft. And so the others who do it don't use this Belzona. They use, they basically weld metal into that shaft groove and then retool the shaft by shaving the metal. And that's what makes it more expensive. The, the third group, the highest bid is a company out of Vermont and, or Maine, excuse me, out of Maine. And, you know, they, they, they're specialized in this and they do it, you know, really well, but they're also very expensive, probably more expensive than we need to be, especially at this point in time when we're gonna be replacing these RBC units once the upgrade to the plant is, is done.
Did they go the last time? Didn't they come down from Maine the last time and fix it?
We had them come down from Maine. I think it was on a slightly different situation, a more extensive problem with one of the RBC units. Yes, we have used them in the past. They do great work. But we felt that in, in this instance, and we, we use the Belzona because the last time we had this situation and it's, it's held up well. So we, we feel that, you know, it's something that, you know, we don't need to spend all that extra money on, especially given that we're going to be replacing these with a different technology.
Okay. Any other questions? And Barry, thank you for, you know, kind of giving the really, I, I mean, very important technical responses because, you know, when you just look at the procurement form, you know, it does leave sometimes questions, especially when the numbers are so, so far apart. So, thank you. So we have a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion to advertise and receive bids for the removal and disposal of sewage from sewage pump stations?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion to submit to the New York State Department of Transportation the proposed application for a COVID-19 recovery temporary use permit allowing temporary closure of a portion of Main Street Route 94 to permit outdoor dining and upon approval of the application by the DOT to close the roadway on Fridays and Saturdays from 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM and Sundays 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, starting April 16th, 2021 through May 16th, 2021, pending further extension of Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.38 covering those dates.
Second. Mayor, could you give us kind of an overview of, of the, you know, the restaurant's response? And-
Yeah, we, we sent out a, a couple questionnaires to our local restaurants. I kind of divided up because the, the one important thing we, information we needed to know was Main Street and how many people were gonna participate. And so we got an overwhelming positive response. Every restaurant that participated in the fall will, will do that again. And then also we sent out a sep- a separate questionnaire to restaurants on Spring Street and restaurants on Railroad Avenue. And all of those restaurants, again, want to participate. And so, so, and then the question two came with the time. Last year, if you remember correctly, we did Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and originally Sundays. And so this year, we're trying to limit it a little bit to just the weekend, to Saturday, Fridays, Saturdays, and then Sunday. Last year, we did it from 10 to 2. Most of the restaurants felt that doing from 12 to 4 was a better time period because it, it captured brunch and early dinner. So, so it seems like it, it would work for them, so. So we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Make a motion to approve the budget modification and transfer request as per the Village Treasurers letter dated March 29th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Make a motion to grant permission to Wickham Works to present a summer 2021 outdoor out exhibition called Voice, Voice, how do you spell it? Voices, Voices.
Voices.
How to pronounce that? Showcasing the work area artists at Railroad Green from August 14th, 2021 to August 31st, 2021, pending Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan, and New York State Department of Health with the assistance from the Village of Warwick Department of Public Works in installing the projects the week of August 9th, 2021. Completed facility use permit, proof of property insurance and security deposit have been received.
Second. Just discussion. So Railroad Green then is going to be closed for that whole period of time, basically? I mean, is this, is it expected that this is going to occupy the entire space?
I believe, like, just as last year, there will be a number of sculptures, but it won't mean that it will be shut down. It, it'll just be like open to the public to, to view the sculptures.
But, but there'd be no other events, you know, for, for the 17 days that this is operating?
At this point, we, we have no events on the calendar.
Okay.
I, Mayor, I'd like to see them get together with Mr. Moser and, and kind of plan where they want to put these pieces and just to make sure that, you know, it just doesn't get in the way with normal traffic or-
Right. Yes, I think we have to look at that and limit it to, you know, so that the, so the public can use the park as well. So, of course, I agree.
And, and I noted that they included in their letter that the, each artist's concept would be reviewed by Wickham Works to ensure suitability for all audiences. Didn't last year, it include that you as the mayor would also be part of that process? I, I think that's important to have again this year.
Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen? Uh, we have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Make a motion to grant permission to Highlander Rugby to use Memorial Park for practices and scrimmages from April 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2021, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, pending Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan, and New York State and Orange County Departments of Health. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance and security deposit have been received. It is the responsibility of Highland, Highlander Rugby to enforce that parking is in the designating parking lot and not in the grass or on the entrance roads. Highlander Rugby will also be responsible to reimburse the Village of Warwick for Orange and Rockland electrical charges for use of the lights in Memorial Park. All events must be in coordination with the other activities taking place in the park such as Warwick Little League, Warwick Youth Football, Warwick Adult Kickball, and OC Bomber Softball, and Warwick Rascals.
Second.
Discussion. I just, I just want you to let you know, I mean, it's, you know, Brad is very excited about bringing rugby to, to Warwick. And he has been in a good conversation with Brian Perez, who is the president of Warwick Youth Football, you know, finding out that Brian Perez played rugby for West Point. So they have, they have communicated and so we'll be able to share, you know, all those fields again with all these folks that are gonna use the park. So we're excited about that.
Very good. Any other questions? Questions for Bill? Uh, so we have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Motion to grant permission to Warwick Adult Kickball League to use Memorial Park May 14th, 2021 through August 1st, 2021 on Friday nights from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, pending Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan, and New York State and Orange County Departments of Health. Completed park permit, proof of proper insurance, security deposit have been received. Warwick Adult Kickball League will also be responsible with reimbursement of village work for Orange and Rockland electrical charges for use of the lights of Memorial Park. All events must be in coordination with other activities taking place in the park such as Warwick Little League, Warwick Youth Football, Highland Rugby, OC Bombers Softball, and Warwick Rascals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Bill? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Make a motion to grant permission to POWER, Power of Words, exposing racism, racism to use Railroad Green and Railroad Avenue on Saturday, June 19th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM to provide a space for those affected by racism, to have their voice heard through poetry, pending Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan, and New York State and Orange County Departments of Health. Completed facility use permit, proper, proof of property insurance and social, excuse me, and so, security deposit have been received.
Second. Just discussion. Yeah. Does the time involved include setting up and taking down? You know, is there, is there a time for the event that's inside of the hours that we're approving?
Yes, it is. I believe the event actually starts at 11:00.
Right.
Okay. And, and when does the event end?
At 4:30.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, their, their use from it says like 9:00 to 3:30.
For 3:30, okay.
So this is kind of a, something where we could, you know, if necessary, suggest they close a little bit earlier so it doesn't conflict maybe with the, with the, you know, with the restaurants on Railroad Avenue, but maybe-
It does say conclude by throwing off by 5:00.
Yeah.
When we're through, I do have another question on the permit itself.
Go ahead, George.
The permit is signed by the temporary interim pastor of Christ Church, but the final signature saying the red and facility use requirements and defending us all and indemnifying it is not signed by a village resident, someone has no response, no authorization to sign on behalf of the church.
So what do you suggest, George, that we have redo the sheet?
I think somebody who is legally responsible should at least sign the form. Yeah. I mean, our policy of, our security deposit, to my understanding, we take them and we just hold them. We don't deposit them. And then as to the event, we give the checks back to the people. So we really have no security to begin with because somebody could just stop to check and not worry about it. But this is signed by someone who has no legal responsibility of authorization to, to defend it.
How, how do you, the board, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to proceed pending the correct, you know, authorization of the permit?
Well, I mean, so the, the Reverend, he's using the Christ Church address. Are you saying that he needs to use his home address?
His home, his home address is Mel Vernon, I don't know. He's, he's a temporary part-time priest here, filling in. So he does reside here half the week, but he's not, I don't believe he would be considered a legal resident. But the next signature is by someone in the town who has no, no, no authority in the church to put, to indemnify us by the church.
Oh, that's what, S.D. Jennings?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So Reverend Holt, if it would like to, I done, indemnify us and sign it, I guess it'd be okay, but not the way it is.
I hear you. That's a good point.
So it doesn't seem to me that there's any reason why this can't get corrected and be brought back the next meeting.
That's true. We, there's time.
It's early enough.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll-
Probably vote the motion down and-
Yeah. So did we have a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe you did, yes.
All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
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 I, I assume that would void motion number eleven as well.
Yeah, you're right.
We will just uh move forward to uh motion number twelve.
Okay. Make a motion to grant permission to Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park for a department picnic on Saturday, July thirty first. Two thousand and twenty-one from nine AM to nine PM. This time will include setup and breakdown, including the use of alcohol within the park. Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase. Reopening plan, New York State and Orange County Departments of Health completed park permit, proper. Proof of proper insurance, including host liquor liability have been received. Security deposit has been waived.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Grant permission to the Warwick Fire Department to use Veterans Memorial Park for the retirement party on Wednesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one from three PM to nine PM. This time will include setup and breakdown, including the use of alcohol within the park. Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan. And New York State and Orange County Department of Health completed park permit and proof of proper insurance, including host liquor liability have been received. Security deposit has been waived.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Make a motion to approve the New York State Gaming Commission Form GC. Dash RCF Raffle Consent Form for Music for Humanity. To sell raffle tickets in the Village of Warwick during the two thousand and twenty-one calendar year and authorize a village clerk to sign the same. Approval of Form GC dash RCF does not authorize the applicant to sell tickets at their leisure. All ticket sales during events and or street fairs are subject to prior written approval of the event organizers and must be filed for the, in the clerk's office. All our ticket sales are subject to prior written approval from Village Board of Trustees.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two on Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven thirty PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Mayor, do we have to read the uh, the legal notice? For this?
It, it probably, uh, no, we usually read the, read the legal notice at the public.
At the meeting, okay, okay, big pardon. Make a motion to grant permission to the Nicholas P. Lassando Junior. Warwick Township Post two fourteen of the American Legion to hold Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May thirty first, two thousand and twenty-one. And to use Veterans Memorial Park Fireman's Monument area from eleven AM to twelve, approximately twelve PM. The parade will step off at approximately eleven AM with lineup beginning on Main Street in front of Village Hall. As for their letter received on March twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one. The parade route will be as follows: Main Street, Oakland Avenue to the Warwick Cemetery, Gallery Road to the Saint Stephen Cemetery. Forest Avenue to Veterans Memorial Park Fireman's Monument. All activities must be in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, New York State Regional Phase reopening plan, New York State and Orange County Departments of Health. Town of Warwick Police Department approval, completed park permit, proof of proper insurance have been received. Security deposit has been waived.
Uh, the second, I want to comment.
Yes, George.
Uh, they can't do that all between eleven and twelve. I think their timing is wrong.
That's a good question, George. Do you know if they're going to have ceremonies at each cemetery or are they just going to march through?
Bill, even if they didn't have ceremonies, they couldn't get that far that fast.
Okay. You want to make it to twelve thirty or so?
I don't know what their entire plan is. Uh, it didn't say in the letter to the VFW, but uh, this.
I, I would say one thirty.
I would say, I would have said two, just.
Two, okay.
I know how, I know how fast we walk.
I hear you. So does anybody want to amend that?
I would make it amended at the two PM.
Okay.
Uh, that way they, when, if they're doing services, we're covered. If we're not, if they're not, we're still covered.
Okay.
Uh, but they can't do it in an hour.
You're correct, George. Yeah, so um, we have a second as amended, um, all in favor?
Hi.
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 And trustee Bachmann?
Uh, attendance at schools and conferences, whereas there is to be held during the coming official year, A, NICOMS Annual Meeting Training School. B, NICOMS Fall Training School, C, NICOMS Public Works Training School. D, NICOMS Winter Legislative Meeting and E, NICOMS Regional Training Event. And whereas attendance by certain municipal officials, employees at one or more of these meetings, conferences or schools benefits the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved as follows: One, that the following officers and employees are authorized to attend the following schools. One, Mayor Mike Newhart, trustees Barry Chaney, William Lindberg, George McManus, Corey Bachmann. A, NICOMS Annual Meeting and Training School, Fall Training School, Winter Legislative Meeting and Regional Training Events. Two, Village Clerk Rena Averson, Deputy Clerk Mary Ann Benedict, Village Treasurer Sadie Becker, Deputy Treasurer Denise Boniz. B, NICOMS Fall Training School and Regional Training Events. Three, DPW Supervisor Mike Moser, D, NICOMS Works Training School. Two, that this resolution is effective immediately.
Second.
And that's a roll call as well.
I think I have a question. We're not allowing any uh training for Boris to go any, to any schools?
I believe we do that on an individual request basis relative to. Where he can find the, the training opportunities that are available for code enforcement officers.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that the NICOM is in that. And is involved in those activities.
Uh, usually not, um, not that I've ever seen.
It's, yes, the Code Enforcement Officers Association or something named similar to that.
Okay, so um, so we have a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote, sorry.
Yes.
Tessie Lindberg?
Yes.
Tessie McManus?
Yes.
Tessie Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes. And George?
I make a motion dedicate South Lynn Street in honor of Chief Warandoff of the second Daniel G. Pryle.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And uh, we don't have any addendums, so that's a nice thing. Um, final comments from the floor? Final comments from the board? Okay.
What, Mayor, uh, if I could just make a one comment, um. It's, it's wonderful that uh, you know, many, many, many folks are using Stanley Deming Park, uh, you know, including, you know, the playground. Uh, however, I, I just want to. Just, just make sure uh, people are parking uh all over the place on Parkway, um, you know, in front of no parking signs. And as they extend up the hill, uh, they're actually uh parking in the street, so. Um, I, I would just, you know, caution the people, uh, there, there are other places to park on, on Park Lane, uh, possibly, so. It, it, it causes a, you know, a, a situation. Whereas it's uh just too busy on that street, you know?
We've had to actually uh have the police come and.
Yeah.
Try to do some traffic control and parking control, so.
Yeah, good. Yeah, it's a good problem to have, but.
Yeah, uh, and um, on, on, on the brighter side, I've gotten uh some pretty uh positive reports on um. Families, children, uh, people participating in the park activities, the playground especially, wearing masks. And adhering to social distancing, so uh, that's, that's a great thing. I mean, that was our, I think our greatest concern and so that's happening. Okay, may I have a motion to close the board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, gentlemen.
Good night, all.
Night, everybody.
Night, everybody.